All right, we started the September 11th meeting. We met at 5:30 for a brief executive session. Now we're returning to open session. So I'd like to start by saying this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We've got Maureen Springer from Silver Lake Regional School Committee here to talk to us about the request for support of a easement and special legislation. So can I turn it over to you, Maureen?
Absolutely. This has been a project that's going on for about 15 years. We've actually, going back through our records, we look at each other and say, didn't we vote that? And we have voted a number of times. But the town of Kingston had a grant, and because they didn't get all the paperwork in, they couldn't use the grant. So now they're applying for it again. So what it is, and I'll show you, it's this little piece as you drive up Lake Street, and the school's here. You almost can't see it, it's pretty overgrown. It's like this little side piece there. A lot of kids go parking in that.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
I always wondered where they went.
Exactly. But the culvert is over here, and the concern is that, again, they've been trying to do this for a number of years. It's mostly on the town property, but they need an easement order to actually do the physical work. So I had sent you the different things that they were asking about, and Fred has researched this to the limit. And it's coming up again Thursday night.
Okay.
And as I said, we're all like, didn't we already do that? You know, it seemed like so long ago. But in a letter, I sent you a copy of Pine de Braz, and she said this has been going on, you know, forever. But that's basically what it is. It's more for the Jones River watershed to protect the water that's coming out, going in, and to save some of the fish.
Okay, and they support this easement?
Oh, yeah. They're the ones that asked us to do it.
Very good. Okay. And you just would need us to vote to support it? And then I think you provided us with a letter that we need to...
It's not really a vote. It's going to come back to Silver Lake for a vote.
Okay.
This is more of an informational meeting to let everybody know what's going on. And I'll have these handouts, I can leave this with you if you want.
Okay.
And then what I'm assuming that we're going to do Thursday night is discuss this, the logistics of the whole thing, and then Silver Lake will take a vote.
Okay, perfect.
So that's where it is.
It sounds like it's the right thing to do, so we should get on with it.
Yeah, we were disappointed. Mark DeBonnie and I were looking at each other like, didn't we do this before? And we went back and found the records, but it seemed like the ball got dropped because they lost the grant.
Gotcha.
So now it's back being brought to the surface again.
Okay.
So that's what's up.
Great, well, thanks, Maureen.
I can resend this to you if you want.
No, I've got the letter from Pine. I don't know if that's something that we'd need to put on the website. Do you think that would be helpful at all, Bree, or no?
Do you want to take these copies?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could scan those in.
Agreed.
Perfect, and then it gives people an idea of what we're talking about.
Yeah, and then there's a couple websites in Pine's letter that she left. And I know Tom Collett is involved in this, obviously. But Kingston has to request it because of the legislation directing easement, so that's why it's going down that way.
Okay, perfect.
Can you send that to me? Absolutely. It'll be easier to... I'll send it to all of them.
Perfect, that'd be perfect.
All the correspondent and everything.
You're right. Did you have any questions? Mark, for Maureen?
No.
Great. Thank you so much for coming in.
Great. I had to put my jammies, took my jammies off to come up, and I'm like, damn.
Oh, darn it!
You don't want me to come in my bathroom. See you guys.
All right, goodnight, thanks. Maybe next time.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, thank you. Okay, let's start at the top. Community Paradigm Executive Search for Town Administrator Follow-Up. So we're meeting with Bernie on Wednesday?
We have Bernie coming in Wednesday.
And what time is that?
5:30.
5:30, that's what I thought, okay. And we're posted?
We're posted, right, Bree?
To meet with, are we posted to meet with Bernie Wednesday at 5:30?
I don't know at 5:...
Okay.
Let me check.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. Then Employment Opportunities, Fire Clerk Interviews, the position has been filled?
The position's filled. It seems like a good fellow, and as I mentioned, we want the chief to put out a broad announcement letter so everybody knows.
Okay, perfect. And I believe they've already started, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and Barbara's been meeting, Barbara and Colleen have been meeting with him to, you know, how do you do payroll, how do you do warrants, et cetera.
Terrific. All right, Fire EMS. Do you want to hold off on Hire Consultant until the chief comes back at 7:00?
Yeah, probably.
And then just talk about resignations, or you want to hold the whole thing?
Well, resignations, I mean, there are four that we've received in the last week, week and a half. And it's a concern, and that's why we had the meeting tonight. And I'm sure the consultant process is going to help us understand better how we go forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Board of Health resignation letter, it's actually from the health agent Kathy Drynan.
Right.
Unfortunately, she has submitted her notice. I believe she gave us two weeks, didn't she, Art?
She did.
Yeah, so what do we have, like, one more week with Kathy?
Maybe a few days.
Okay, okay. Okay.
She indicated that she would be willing to help out on some basis, right, at times?
She would be willing to do FERC tests for us. I've asked her about anything else, because if we don't get some help, we won't be approving any septic systems or anything in this town until we get it done.
Okay.
So what?
I don't know yet.
So the search has started?
Okay.
The search for a replacement has started?
Can we get something posted now?
If we do it now, he can be at 6:00.
I've asked her for, if she knew anybody that might want to.
No worries. Yeah, why don't you just get something posted now?
Sorry.
Okay, I've asked her if she might know anybody who would want a part-time job, you know, that's qualified as a health agent. And I haven't spoken with her today. That was in an email Sunday morning. So I don't know. I do hope to have a review of the plans for the engineering report for the Public Safety Building Committee, who has a negative opinion of the septic system. And I dispute it, but I need an expert. So I've got to get that down. We're going to be putting a lot of things on hold.
Other towns that have part-time health agents?
Most of them are full-time, like Copper and Halifax, and certainly Millboro, you know, you're in Kingston. So my hope would be that we could get somebody that would fill in part-time as the town's health agent. We are fortunate that we have someone else to do FERCs also. And our food inspector, she works for multiple towns. That's what she does. She goes from restaurants to convenience stores, and anybody that has anything to do with food stuffs. And she does our inspections, so we're covered with Cisco and the other places in town that need, that wasn't on the health agent, Dennecks School and so forth. They all need to be inspected. So we're covered there. That was somebody else, that just happened to be another Kathy. In the board of health, we only hire Kaffis.
Makes it easy.
It's easier to remember the name. So, yeah, we will be posting and getting up a help wanted as quick as we can. And then we're also going to do a word of mouth, and see if we can get something out of it.
Art? Well, I was just going to say, does, do we have a job description, or is it really spelled out by the MGLs?
We do. We do. It's up, as a matter of fact, we've put it, we've put together today.
Okay.
So that's what I need, we can post it, and suppose the Mass Association, the Boards of Health, and other, anywhere we might be able to come up with somebody in it. Hopefully, it'll be somebody local that can, you know, live in an adjacent town or not too far away, so, you know, you won't get somebody coming down for Quincy to do two hours on a Tuesday night. It's just not worth it.
Do you think it would be worth reaching out to those towns that have a full time just to say, you know, we're in a bind in the interim? Would you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's already, I've got the list of all the contacts and everything, so, yeah, we're all new on that.
Great, great.
Okay.
It's a shame that she's leaving.
Yeah, she's been an asset to the town.
Especially where she knew the town, too.
Right, right. It's unfortunate. Anything to add, Mark, on that one? Okay.
Just to the extent we can help, let us know.
Okay. We're just not taking the courses?
I don't know if they'd let me in at my age.
Well, as long as we have Art here, do we want to go to ACO?
Sure.
Incident reporting and protocol?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we received your packet, Art?
That was Harry's packet.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Okay. And we had received something from council, too, that was, spelled out what the responsibilities were, and they suggested that we put something together, and I'd be happy to get this to you guys for review as well. So we need to, this is something we need to work on, but I don't know as if we're going to get this all sorted out tonight.
Yeah, I think, just, you know, from the board of health perspective, and I know that it troubled Kathy greatly, the lack of response, because it's a health issue. And there are reports, I think you'll see in the general laws, that the board of health should be getting a report on a regular basis. That's state law.
Right.
You're not going to pick our nose in anywhere. It's not that. When we only find out what's wrong by something, if they go to the hospital, and then maybe a week or 10 days later, we get a pass from the hospital at the board of health informing us of saying, you know. So it's just, it's just something, the job needs to be done and done properly, because again, it's a public health issue.
So how are we going to go forward with this?
Hi. I mean, one small piece, and I sent out a, I created this form, reporting form, and I, I mean, that's one piece of it. It's not the whole thing, but, I mean, I hear the problem with you guys getting reports, and I think within the selectmen's office, it's been a problem as well, and kind of a challenge, which report, and when is it coming? So it felt to me like one simple piece in working on this is creating this incident report and asking the animal control officer with every incident to fill it out. It includes on the second page a place where he checks off that he has submitted to Board of Health, Police Department, and Board of Selectmen. And I think that's a way that we all can keep a much closer eye on what's going around. It doesn't solve all the problems, and certainly in the packet that you've given us are these questions about the animal inspector report, which certainly should be getting to you guys, too.
Absolutely.
So it felt to me like the incident report is a pretty simple way in to at least some of the problems. Not all of them, but, did you get a chance to look at what I put together, the incident report, a new incident report?
No, I don't think that I have.
I don't think I saw that either.
It wasn't in my box either. You said you put it in all of our boxes, but...
I did, or, no, no, I emailed it to all of you.
Which was an email?
Was it? Okay.
I didn't get it.
All right, well, you know what? Thank God I made copies.
You're so good.
And I can handle it for you guys. I mean, if you want to take a quick look at it, it's pretty straightforward, but it just, it offers, it offers a vehicle to formalize a little bit the reporting.
Well, it just seems like we need to be working much closer on this, and there's definitely a disconnect. And this is public health, and maybe it makes more sense that the ACO reports to the board of health, but we're the appointing authority, or maybe, you know, I just don't, I don't know what the answer is.
I think the answer is that at this point, that he be reporting to both, to each of them.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
And I think we probably need to be instructing him that every incident of each type, one of these forms be filled out.
Okay.
And at that point, we have a lot more control, and that covers a fair amount of the document that was put together, I think.
Okay, so this is...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Can it be something, with the last incident, it was, I wasn't dispatched, so I don't have a report? Can it be something, he might not be available, but he should still report when he gets, if there could be something maybe put in here about that?
I think that might be an instruction, that even if someone else is dealing with it, he needs to file a report with us.
Right.
Because he is the animal control officer.
Absolutely.
Because it did, it eventually got down to him.
Harry?
He's the one responsible.
Right.
He's the one that should be reporting.
Right.
And beyond these simply incident incidents, the other thing that bothers me are the yearly reports. And we've got many, many owners of horses, well, you know, animals in general.
Yeah.
That he's supposed to be visiting at least once a year, so he should have a file of at least one report for each one of these facilities in this town that we should have received, and you should have received.
Well, he showed me his log, and he does do the reports annually. He indicated that he had. He usually does them in the fall, but we had not received them, and obviously, you have not either. I'm not sure where the reports are going. So we can certainly tighten up that, that we want copies of those reports as well.
If I might add one thing, this is nice, Mark. I would put a time on it, must be submitted within 24 hours, within 48 hours.
Of the incident?
Not just open ended.
Of notification?
Yeah, in other words, I go out on a call in September, and I can turn it in on the summer. And I'm covered.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
That is fair. Yeah, date and time, incident reported, maybe date and time, incident investigated, or whatever, that he actually responded, so that...
Yeah, but this must be turned in within 24 hours, 48 hours.
Well, then I think we can instruct him.
We can instruct that. Right.
You could put a little thing down the bottom of the second page.
Right. No, this does look good.
I'd like to see us maybe try this going forward with the modifications you've talked about, and, you know, next 30, 60 days, see how we do, and then we come back and talk about it again, and make sure, are we on track, or is it just fallen by the wayside?
I think one of the things, particularly with rabies, and you know better than anybody, we, that bad incident, before all, I had to go through the rabies treatment, and I haven't gone through it, but I understand I wouldn't wish that on anyone. So timeliness, there is a reason for the timeliness.
Sure. This is a good step.
I think, yeah, it's really good, too. I would just suggest, too, that we also look at clarifying his job, as David Jenkins suggested, so that it's crystal clear what the responsibility is in the reporting, and, you know, we may have to implement, or add this to the job description.
And, you know, if we do kind of a test over the next 30, 60, 90 days, then come town meeting, we can decide where this all should be flushed out, and then finalize it.
Right, yeah, it'll be fluid, a work in progress, and, you know, it may require some tweaks along the way, things that work, that aren't working, and until we get this where it needs to be.
So is there, that next step, you did meet with him a bit ago?
I did.
And another brief conversation or meeting, that we do have this form, that the animal inspector reporting should include Board of Health as well?
Right. And it might be helpful to have the job description ready then, as well. And basically, it's just, you know, we'd have to modify this for Plimpton, and it just really spells out the, what the MGLs require. So do you want to pursue this? Getting this tightened up, or you just want to start with this?
You know, I, my thought was at least start with the incident reporting, and that's the first step, and...
Okay.
Or I can work on that if you want, and try to get it done by next week.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, this just, and we can give this to you guys, too. You can take a look at it, and it just lays out the essential functions of the job, minimum competencies, that kind of thing, and I'm sure that, you know, this will be...
This came from Halifax?
No, this came from town council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he said we really need to get this...
For sure, these, you should see it, and add your two cents.
Right.
All right, so I will, I'll have this by next Monday, so that by next Monday, we can...
Perfect. Okay, so...
Are you going to circulate it to Art and Harry, right?
Um, yeah, because I sent it to both of you guys, so you have a copy of it. And if you don't, I can send it to Art and Harry.
Well, maybe I'll try to work on it in the next couple of days and get it to you guys for a looksee.
Oh, yeah, after you've made the, yeah, perfect. Made the modifications.
Okay.
Okay. So do we want to try to set something up with Frank for next week to talk about this? I think we've got council set up for 6:00 for an update on changes to the legislation that we need to be aware of, and I don't know as if we've got anything else on the agenda so far.
It makes sense, because if council's still here, they could sit through it.
And that's actually his specialty.
Okay. 6:30, something like that.
Okay.
Good, good.
All right, so we'll do, we'll meet with Greg at 6:00, and then invite Frank in at 6:30?
Yeah.
To talk about the incident?
You felt this wanted to go?
Okay, okay.
Good.
Perfect. And you're welcome to come at 6:00 when Greg is here for the legislative updates, and there'll be, you know, questions, and what we, the town needs to do to, in response to some of the changes. Okay, perfect. Great, so we'll see you next week, then. All right, back to the agenda. All right, solar update, anything?
Nothing, and I think we might as well, I, he is totally unresponsive at this point.
Want to put it in the parking lot?
Yeah, I think, as soon as something comes up, I'll ask for it to go back on the agenda.
Perfect, okay, so we'll take that one off.
While we're talking about that, we have this aggregation coming, but I guess, I received a thing, it looked like almost an official report that said, you know, you can get green energy, sign up for it, and I assume it went to every resident in town, Plimpton's now. But when you read the fine print, it's going to cost you more.
Yes, it will.
Yes, and the way it was written, it was like, we're doing this to hand you something that's going to save you some money. And then you read the little, so, you know, hopefully we get this aggregation done that will save money, and then...
Well, she wanted to set up a time to come in and talk to us, they were all from Colonial Power.
Yeah, I think there may be something in correspondence, even tonight.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
There's so much in there.
Because I think we're one step further in the process.
And we do. I absolutely want them to come in.
Yeah.
And that one is just plain, on average, saving 60 bucks a month, 60 bucks a year.
That's great.
Okay, Town House Legal Strategy Meeting Follow-Up Permit Application Process, so this would have been the small permit?
Uh, yeah.
For small event permit process?
Little bit of a challenge. I have met with the fire chief and the police chief. This is way, way more complicated, and Art and I have been trying to get together. It's going to take a little time to pull this together. There are so many ifs, ands, and buts. The nice thing was, and this came up a couple of weeks ago, when someone was asking about a small event. I mean, we do have, and this is board of health that most of this work, we have very clear policy and permitting procedure for the greater than 200, for the large event, and board of health somewhere along the way put together a very nice advisory form for small events. It may be that the only permitting we need is on food, and so we really have most of it for the time being, and we have enough of stuff in place that for the time being, even someone coming, asking about a small event, we can give them a lot of information to help them, but I'm working on that now, hopefully, within a couple of weeks. I think we can leave that off as, off the agenda as well.
Okay, you'll tell us when you've got that done.
As soon as I get it together, I will, we'll get that on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, town council, Art, go ahead.
Yeah, if I might, I have this for you, Mark. I got tied up with that, picking up that trailer this afternoon, so...
I knew that was a complicated trailer.
Well, it's a brand-new trailer, so, this is what they use for small events, and I'll just leave that with you. We can get together...
We want to get together this week and just get the food permitting piece worked through.
Perhaps, yeah, if it's an outside vendor, I mean, they must come to the board of health, they must be inspected, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, that's the law.
Yeah.
So, but I left that with you, so maybe Wednesday morning, we can touch base, if that, or afternoon.
I'll write you tomorrow, yeah. We'll find a time tomorrow. Town council feels like if things are charged for, then there has to be some permitting, and particularly on the food piece. But immediately, it brings up, you know, if they make chocolate chip cookies and sell them on the green, I mean, it's being sold, and, yeah, and so this is the stuff we have to work with.
There have been, there was an incident that we had, they wanted to, it was something at the Dennecks School, and the vendor wanted to sell hot dogs. How much do you get for a hot dog? A dollar? You know, how many hot dogs are you going to sell? 50, maybe? And it just wasn't worth the price of a $25 food service inspection to sell 50 hot dogs, you know, so sometimes that, but again, it was foodstuffs that were being sold, so board of health must inspect that vendor. That's the law, so...
Is there any, if it's a nonprofit, is there any sort of leeway in that, or how does it work?
Well, we can, we can certainly not charge for the inspection. I mean, we pay the assistant health inspector to go do this, but we can waive a fee, I mean, we waive the fee for the Dennecks School.
Sure, that looks up.
So, I mean, in cases like that, if it's a nonprofit or something...
Yeah, and you just do that on an ad hoc basis?
Exactly. The church, we do a courtesy kitchen inspection there, for the church.
Sure, sure, good, yeah.
So things like that, you, you, I mean, you have to take a look at, you know, but if it's a, if it's a fund, if it's a profit maker, and we have those...
Right.
Then you're going to pay the fee.
But that's up to the board of health.
Exactly. We can vote, the board can vote to waive the fee, as we do, like I say, for the Dennecks and if there's something else, but...
But the inspections are still being performed?
They're mandatory. They have to be.
It's just the fees not being collected. Okay, that sounds great.
I'll write you tomorrow, we'll find a time.
Okay, on until 1:30 tomorrow.
Okay. Great. All right, Town Council Access Protocol Letter, I think we sent the letter out. We, did it go out to everybody, what the protocol is? I think we decided on it.
You were going to do that, that was...
Yeah, I did. It was done. Yeah, I did, it was done, um, I think everybody agreed to it.
I replied to it, yeah.
Yeah. So, do you want to send that out? If you don't have it, I'll, I'll email it again.
I don't think I have that.
Okay. Okay, no worries.
Did you even get my last email either, right?
No, there might be. Okay, so I will send you the protocol letter and we'll get that distributed.
Because I have it, but you didn't send, and I don't have it.
Okay, okay, yep. That one squared away. All right, Old Colony Planning Council Rural Policy Commission Survey, this had to do with, um, Survey Monkey, the, uh, the survey that we had completed at the request of Old Colony Planning Council, and this is, um, this was at the request of the, um, Rural Community Advisory Commission, and they were established under MGL, um, charged with enhancing the economic vitality of rural communities. The legislation defines rural communities as those with a population density of less than five-hundred people per square mile or less, and the commission, uh, has a fifteen-member body representing rural regions throughout the state, so what they were looking for, uh, the three areas they were focusing on was sewer water and Title V, rural service delivery, and small business support and job creation. So that's why they wanted us to fill out that survey, and, uh, they're going to be looking at, um, our responses and see if there's some, uh, grants that, uh, we might be eligible to participate in.
Straightforward.
Okay. All right, Silver Lake easement, we already met with Maureen, we're squared away with that. Letter of support for the clean energy training project, this was another Old Colony Planning Council, uh, request, and this was, um, had to do with, um, the Department of Housing and Community Development, um, encouraging green energy sources for affordable housing and, uh, different projects that they were working on, and they were asking us to support this. So I think that, um, that we did, I believe, if not, then, um, do you want to make a vote to support?
Whatever you want.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that we support, uh, Old Colony Planning Council in their efforts to, uh, further clean energy, the clean energy training project.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Energy Conservation Incorporated, follow-up on available grant money, um, I dropped the ball on this one, um, I contacted, uh, the gentleman today, his name was Tom, so hopefully I have a answer for you, uh, next week as to what, uh, grant opportunities we might be eligible for.
Good.
All right, um, correspondence.
Big pile today, sorry. Um, so top of the pile here, a bunch of, uh, Chapter Ninety reimbursement requests for each of the three of us to sign.
Okay.
I'll pass those down, I've signed them.
Thank you.
While you're doing that, warrants paid, Eversource seventy-five, KMP seventeen-hundred, uh, Blue Tarp fifty-eight, Local Computer nine-forty-eight, um, Express one-hundred-and-forty-nine, um, App River thirteen, P-three is thirty-eight-hundred, that's our, um, uh, management consultant on the police station. Um, US Bank one-fifty-five, Belmont Springs seven dollars, Comcast one-hundred-and-eighteen. All right. Um, all right, so first, here's a warrant to be signed, apparently we need a vote first, this is from National Telecom Systems, this is our, um, um, computer maintenance, is that what that is? National Telecom Systems?
Yes.
Yeah. The monthly maintenance?
That's the monthly ma, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, so we need a vote, um, to sign the, um, to sign the warrant, I think it's seventy-five bucks a month, right?
That's not, nothing to do with-
No.
Put with Michael on it.
No, it's, can I see the attachment to it?
Yeah.
Can you put the warrant that's signed? Yeah, this is the, um, telephone to voicemail.
Oh, voicemail, maybe.
That's right, because App River is the support of the other. Um, and it's our service agreement, it's, it's, uh, two thousand and seventeen, I don't think this gets paid. Oh, it says this is, we didn't have a phone service before, and now we do, I know Dale was in the works doing something, I think this is what they came up with, and so if you want to, the agreement's in there, it got signed, the warrant got signed, like it was a regular bill.
Yeah, I signed it, not recognizing that it was essentially a contract, I think, and that we, we needed to vote on it first.
Not unless I should be talking to Mike about this.
You know, I'd like to just run it by, uh-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would hold it until next week.
Perfect, let's hold it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, good advice.
I'll take it over to you, too.
All right. Um, this is a bill from Context Architecture for forty-two thousand dollars for the schematic, uh, or the, um, the, the construction documents on the police station. So this brought up an interesting issue, and I checked with Colleen Thompson on it, um, asking her if, um, we should pay this at this point, and what we, in our conversation back and forth, um, became the question of whether that committee, the Public Safety Building Committee, would be the ones signing the warrant. We sign contracts, we, the board of selectmen, but they're the ones, um, that are knowing the work has been done and, and all of that, so I'm not sure amongst us, I wanted to check with Barbara tomorrow, um, she asked me to hold off until they meet, that, um, committee meets next week, to make sure it was time to pay it, but I, I think there still is the question of, and we're going to be doing this for a total of three-point-five million dollars over the next couple of years, so I think we ought to be clear on whether the committee would be signing the warrants or whether we would. So I'm glad to check with Barbara along the way and see where we go on that.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so, uh, it's really a legal issue, I mean, in a sense, I mean, Barbara should just tell us who's-
Yep, yeah, absolutely. And, I mean, we know we sign contracts, and, um, in fact, I think there's going to be, or one didn't come this week, it'll probably come next week for the borrows, and that is something that we'd sign, but, um, um, and certainly we'll be keeping a close touch along the way, what goes on, but I'll check with Barbara tomorrow and see what's up.
Oh, I'll miss those, okay. Yeah.
This had come up before, and-
Yeah.
I was talking to Barbara, and I'm glad you're clarifying it, because it, it does seem to me that, uh, the Public Safety Committee should be signing everything before it gets to us, and then we, we should sign, I think, because it's our legal responsibility.
And, and that would be fine, too. Um, okay. Uh, this is, uh, um, a, a letter and appointment slip, uh, from, uh, the police chief, um, for David Harriman, he reports that David recently retired from the Carver, um, Police, and he'd like to appoint him a special police, um, a special police officer, uh, until June of two thousand and seventeen, that would actually be June of two thousand and eighteen, right?
Is it just for the balance of the year?
Yeah, exactly.
That's right, it'd have to be.
June two thousand and seventeen, I think we've already celebrated.
Right.
I was on vacation.
Should, should, may I change it to eighteen, assuming that that was what we were going to do?
That is.
Um, uh, the chief, uh, thinks that he would be a wonderful addition to the force, so-
Terrific.
I make a motion that we appoint, uh, David Harriman to the special, um, police officer status.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, a letter from police, or, from, from police chief advising us that the police department will be receiving an additional vehicle, um, uh, from, uh, police department surplus, I guess, a two thousand and twelve Ford Explorer.
Very nice.
Who we getting that person?
Who made the donation? Uh, will receive an addition, a new addition to the police fleet, we have declared the blow-
It's coming my way.
Oh, that's the one you're going to paint red.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but actually, I painted the bill as black, got it done for free, and I want to paint it red.
Okay.
Okay, so that, it's going for police to fight?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, that's why I didn't understand.
Because police got a new vehicle.
Perfect.
Um, I visited with, uh, council on aging today, mainly with my CPC chair hat on, to see if we could recruit one of them to join CPC, along the way, they handed me that, which is, uh, senior housing, affordable housing, that I thought I'd pass along to you and your committee.
Ooh, love it, thank you, thank you very much.
Do you vote on that, approval of that, or do you have to, on the vehicle surplus?
I thought we already did.
I think-
We voted on this, um-
Yeah, we did vote on that, and, oh, forgive me, and it does say at the bottom, this is a transfer from the fire department, and, yeah.
I just didn't know, because it was so long ago, do you have to do it again, because this has been a while.
We can do it.
I make a motion that we accept this letter and accept this vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The vehicle reassignment.
Right, all right. In correspondence, this is the packet that Harry put together, which we have already discussed, um, uh, where to go next. This is a survey from ICMA, uh, which I'd never heard of before, but is the International City County Management Association, they're a nonprofit organization, um, I actually got online and checked them out a little, um, they were formed in nineteen fourteen, they are the leading association of government professionals dedicated to creating and sustaining thriving communities throughout the world. And I showed a pretty cool website, it looks like it's more for town manager, city manager types, but it's a big, long survey on what we have done or not done in terms of, um, looking at regionalization of some services. Um, so it's a big, long survey, I'd be glad to try to fill it out, I honestly wanted to check online and just make sure this was a legitimate organization that we were sharing information with, but, um-
It seems like we get these one a day, you know, of acronyms and your-
Yeah.
I guess it can harm us, but it doesn't do anything for us either, does it?
Um, the only thing it does for us is, it reports that they'll share with us the results, and I, you know, that might be a little interesting, I mean, this is something that's going to be vetted by our town administrators, soon as they come in, hopefully if it's someone a little bit savvy, they're going to know what's important and not important. Maybe I'll look it through and make sure there isn't something we'd prefer not to, um-
Right.
If you're fine with it, I'd say go ahead.
Okay, all right, I'll work on that.
Perfect.
All right, bunch of stuff in our email, um, uh, there is an employment law seminar, the fifth and the seventeenth, um, uh, I forget where this is, I think it's being put on by a law firm, but, um, the, October fifth and seventeenth, um, my dance card's getting pretty full on these, so, and just let you know about it. Um, this is, um, the Mass Municipal Managers Association, they have their meeting September twenty-eighth, a boot camp for new managers, October sixth, they, I don't think that's going to apply for us for a little bit.
Not this year.
Um, this is, um, we were CC'd on this, uh, an email to John Wilhelmsen, having to do with the Denit School water system, and I think it's asking whether the bidding period is actually closed or not, presumably he's dealing with that. Uh, this is from, uh, M-I-I-A, our Workman's Comp Type Insurance, and this is Chipper Safety Programs, um, I think, uh-
But I think I'm going to send that to Jim.
Jim was, yeah, you did, you copied Jim and Art.
Yep, and that's September twenty-ninth, um, actually, it probably went to the fire chief as well, I guess maybe if you guys are helping-
Yeah, we're all on the same email list.
Yep. Uh, this one was to the town coordinator, um, oh, this is a big bunch of information, I think, about the aggregation program.
I think it is, too.
And I, it wasn't clear to me whether we had to do anything or not. Maybe I'm going to give that one to you to take away.
Sure, yeah, I'll, um-
And she's coming in, right?
And we're going to get her scheduled.
Yeah, great.
I'm sorry, who was that from?
This was from, it says DPU, from Corinne Wild, from Pierce Atwood, and I think she's the one that emailed, that wants to come in and, uh, and talk to us.
Um, this is from, uh, talking about acronyms, this is MCPPO, I know you know who that is.
Oh, I can't remember it now.
It's procurement, it's procurement.
Oh, good for you, Massachusetts Public Purchasing Official, um, uh, um, something about some recertification that I don't believe we're part of at this point.
No, I don't think we are either.
Um, uh, this is a letter from the Mayflower Health, uh, Organization, um, about a wellness program, I passed this on to the Assistant Treasurer, I think she handles that, this one is website editors, online training, probably we're okay on that. Um, the, um, Massachusetts Municipal Association, um, uh, monthly came out, there were a couple things on that, the legislative breakfast, there's one the end of this week, I'll go to that, anything in particular you'd like our legis, our state legislators to hear from us, Bernie-
We want more money.
Money, yeah. Um, uh, and in here also the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, uh, October fourteenth, I think you guys talked about-
No, we were going to go to, um, Holy Cross.
Oh, that's right.
Best practices.
All right, well, the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association meeting is October fourteenth, that is, um, uh, uh, Boylston.
And what day of the week is that?
That would be a Saturday. I'll go to that, um, I kind of enjoy those and, um-
Okay.
-speaking to fellow selectmen and seeing the degree to which we share the same problems. The annual meeting, the end of, um, December, and just out of interest, I'd mention this to John Sitewood, is advertising for a town administrator, they have a population of eighteen-thousand and a budget of eighty-five million.
Wow, and what are they paying?
Uh, uh, to be negotiated.
Okay, to be determined.
I was surprised that, uh, Plimpton wasn't in there.
I actually looked, the reason I looked was that, so I don't, I don't know what that's about.
Wednesday, maybe we'll find out.
Yeah.
Wednesday. Okay, few more, um, uh, letters of resignation, um, from the, uh, the fire department, um, which we've all seen, um, hey, I think we did it, all right. Plumpton Halifax Express from two weeks ago, um, they reported that we had a meeting, uh, the Denit had a back-to-school open house, and there was a, um, a nice, uh, lunch of some type at the Denit, um, uh, sunrise was six-twelve that week. Humor.
What were the tides?
I didn't do the tides. They were for, they weren't for Buzzards Bay, they were for Boston.
Okay.
Um, last week's, uh, Plumpton Halifax Express, uh, Plumpton CPC had their annual request for, um, applications, the application deadline's October fifteenth, and, uh, uh, more Denit's goings on, and, um, actually, the, the one that caught my attention is the Pressed Flower Workshop by Peg Gillette, um, September twenty-first, at the library, ten-thirty and six-thirty, that's, that's a pretty cool thing.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, with relief, I can report that that's corresponding. I, forgive me, I'm just going to check and make sure, I thought there was one more thing here. No, I guess we got it all.
Okay. Is there somewhere where the criteria to apply for the CPC is spelled out?
There is, um, I have, I have posted it right out here in the lobby, I have posted it in the library, it is on the CPC part of the, um, uh, of the town website.
Okay.
The whole CPC plan is there.
Okay.
And if anyone has any questions whatsoever, feel free to call me, write to me, um, uh, we love new projects to come along, that we work with the people and improve and, um, and hopefully bring to fruition.
Terrific.
October fifteenth the deadline.
I think somebody asked me, "Do you have to be a resident to be on a board committee here? Can you be a taxpayer? Can you have land? But you don't, but you're not a resident, Plumpton."
I don't know.
That's a good question.
I don't know.
And could they go to town meeting? If they're a taxpayer in the town of Plimpton, but they're not a resident?
They can go to town meeting, but they can't speak except by a vote of the town.
Okay.
So, we've had that in the past where a landowner has come in, asked to speak, and as moderator, I had to then poll the town, the town vote-
Mm-hmm.
And see if everybody, in that case, yeah, they said sure.
Mm-hmm.
This person wants to know if they can be on a board committee.
Well, we got great, Corbo coming in, right?
But not, a volunteer, but not.
Just ask them, I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
By the town clerk.
Can you, uh, remind us when we meet with Greg next week? This is a question to ask him? Okay, perfect. Okay, so correspondence is done?
Correspondence is mercifully done.
Okay, all right, so, um, why don't we go back to Fire EMS, uh, we need to discuss hiring a consultant, and, um, I don't know, first, we want you to report on your, uh, your reference checks?
Okay, yeah, um, so I did the reference checks, um, Ernie supplied us with, uh, Ernie Ernie supplied us with, Ernie Horn supplied us with three, and MRI gave us a whole big list. If I shared that with the chief and with you all, if I can summarize it, the people that I spoke to about Ernie had pretty much good things to say, nothing bad to say, were pretty enthusiastic about him. And the people that I spoke to with MRI were almost uniformly extremely enthusiastic about that.
How many did you speak to?
The everybody that Ernie gave us, that was three. The MRI, I think it was five or six. One, two, three, four, five. They gave us a list of probably about 50. Many of them were quite old, so I chose the ones that were recent projects that they'd worked on. And if there was a little sub-theme in it, and I actually heard this from both groups, and I sort of asked them how we could get the most out of the study, and if there was one theme there, it was to sort of, as soon as possible, narrow the options down. You know, we talked about how, well, we're looking at sharing, and we're looking at privatization and all that. And they said, "That's all fine, but if you can begin to narrow that down pretty quickly and get them then to give you the roadmap on the particular thing that you felt like you were doing." So that makes a lot of sense. Just keep that in mind. So I guess that's what I can say. Uniformly, everyone said we get good work out of either one. I think people were also impressed with MRI, with kind of their credentials and the number of these they'd done. And I think what came up in those conversations is that, look, there may be some changes that are going to come out of this, and you want to have real substantiation of why you're doing the things that you're doing. Particularly the MRI people, several of them said, "We keep going back to the study, and we keep using it as an absolutely correct justification for what we did."
And these were, we were just doing reference checks on the two groups that we met with at our last meeting.
We had decided not to...
That they were right, who we wanted to pursue. What's the cost difference between these two?
I think it's $500.
Yeah, it's pretty negative.
They both came in. I think MRI was 18.5, and I think Ernie was 18.
Okay.
The one big difference otherwise, and that hopefully isn't important, but I think Ernie felt, I was talking about, I believe, six or eight weeks, and MRI was talking about three to four months.
Yeah. Well, yes, I'll...
Start.
I'm leaning to Ernie. For a couple of reasons. I've worked for a consulting group twice in my career. And the thing I worried about, you have, if you're going to hire a consultant, you want to make sure that they really get to what you're after, and that you not end up with a report that spells out, you know, some of the deficiencies or the good things, but really doesn't make, doesn't set up an action item right out of it. And that's what I'm hoping, that we, whoever we pick, and I just felt he had a little more street sense, but that may be, I may have just taken that wrong. MRI had three people here. They seemed to be eminently qualified. It wasn't clear to me, though, who was going to be doing what. And so that's just, that's the only thing I can say. I mean, when we did the town administrator, MRI was in there, and I said I was for them. We ended up with Bernie Lynch, and thank God, seems to be doing a great job. So it's not that I have anything against MRI, it's just that I felt Ernie honed it of, at least reaching me in terms of being, having the savvy to make this really happen.
Well, I felt like Ernie was extremely thorough, that there would be no rock unturned with his assessment of the building, his assessment of the vehicles, of the department, of everything. And he did make it clear that he would lay out a roadmap for us, how we're going to get step by step to where we want to go. But then MRI was, I thought they were very good, too. I think really either one of them is a good, would be a good choice.
What?
Well, I think, not unlike our previous conundrum when we were looking at the other consultant, either one of them, I think, can be fine. I'm sort of leaning to MRI only because of that sort of being a big firm, having done many, many studies, and that adding some legitimacy to whatever changes we want to make. But I'm more than glad, willing to defer to you all, if you're leaning more toward Ernie. I do feel like if we go with Ernie, I want to make sure we emphasize what we're after and not after. You know, we don't need too many pictures of the ball joints of each of the vehicles over there.
Get rid of that.
He's really good at that, and everybody mentioned that. And I, you know, it's lovely, but not what we want. So, I mean, either way, fine. I lean toward MRI on this one, just, but I'm fine either way.
But you said they got glowing reviews, too, from everybody that had worked with them.
You know, once again, they were just by far really enthusiastic. And these are from savvy people, the fire chiefs, the town administrators, not people who, you know, would have a false sense of how the job was done, so.
And that's what we had with Bernie, was just glowing recommendations.
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's exactly the way it was. It was the reverse last time. On that one, Bernie got glowing reviews, MRI got decent reviews. You know, it's a little bit the flip here, but, I mean, I think we definitely want to review the fires.
Yeah, absolutely. What do you think?
Well, as far as Ernest Horn goes, certainly we've used him before, and in hindsight, he really took a good look at that and found out some places where we might have some problems, which by and large have come true. So, you know, obviously, his reputation, we know how he operates, and he's a pretty smart guy. He was a fire chief for 10 years and a police chief for 10 years, so he has good experience. He worked well with us. He sat down with me, and we did a wide-open study. And I know, talking about the ball joints and checking the trucks, that is really also a key piece of the total snapshot picture which we're trying to get here. What's the level of our equipment? You know, where do we stand on it? Quality of it, where it is, its maintenance, all those things. And that's where either one of these companies is going to take a look at it. It's more than just, what's the staff, what's the response time? It's also all the budgetary stuff, it's readiness level, it's all those things, that whole picture. But these guys, especially like MRI, too, being fire chiefs, they have tons of experience in how this works. So Ernie's had a lot of experience in this, too. On the MRI side, I've done a little checking, too, and like you say, glowing recommendations. And they've also, I believe each one of them has taken a system similar to ours at the VLS level and brought it forward, so the nature and the understanding of it, the working parts of it, that's invaluable. And when we're getting a picture here and a recommendation here, and what do we need to do, where do we need to go, those types of things. So they're both very good. I think we all agreed that into that. I mean, wow. So, I mean, I could certainly go either way and know we're going to get a decent bang for our buck. So that's some kind of a wash here, too, you know?
Mrs. Joey?
Well, I'm flexible, too. The only thing that I am impressed with is that so many people that worked with MRI spoke so highly of them, and that's quite a recommendation. Did they feel like they really got to the heart of their issues and that they came forward with actionable plans?
Yeah, you know, the thing I was sort of surprised about is how frank they were, how many problems they were having with their Fire Department. And, you know, there's another one of those, is like, we always think all these problems are peculiar to our town. Yeah, no, they, I think that was, I got the sense that the departments were confident, comfortable with, well, were comfortable with the results of both of them, but particularly with MRI.
Did MRI take a look at the vehicles and the fire station building?
I don't remember about the vehicles.
I don't remember that.
The, I think both said that they would, it wouldn't be the crux of the report, but they would at least take a look. They weren't going to recommend that, whether it was a new or renovated, just whether it was in effect safe, safely to use.
Okay.
I would say they probably had the same opinion.
Okay.
You feel pretty strongly about your...
No, I mean, I do. I feel strongly that, but I'm, both of them are going to do a good job. I'm convinced of that. But there, you know, one firm I worked for was a fixed-contract consultant. So they would do a million-dollar job, and if they, if it cost them more than that, they had to eat it. And I can tell you, the level of intensity that went into figuring out whether it was going to be a million dollars was different than any other consultant firm I saw. And I get that feeling with Mr. Horn, that he's going to do that. If MRI can do that, and if your references feel like they really got that, then I have no problem with MRI either.
And I did hear that from both, that, you know, that they'd put in the extra hours if need be. I mean, I heard a little more from, on the Bernie side, but I did hear that from both.
Bernie side.
Bernie side.
Now you're following me.
Well, we can do. See the problem?
I know. See the problem. Okay. Well, we need to make a decision.
Lauren, who are you voting for? You have to vote one way or the other.
I'm leaning to the MRI side, only because, and I checked some of the credentials of the chiefs. I know one of them a little bit, and after talking to other chiefs and talking to people around it, and not on the, hey, how can they make the fire chief look good in Plumpton? How are they really going to take a look at this thing? How do they open the doors? And what is their true, honest assessment? And I've heard nothing but good things. And of course, I know Ernest Horn, too. So I guess if I had to lean, and I know this is a tough decision for the board and all of us, I would tend to lean toward MRI on this. Three people with, my goodness, over 100 years of experience, I would tend to aim that one a little bit.
Well, and there's three people, too, that are, so it's not just Ernest who's working through this. You've got three different people who have different, you know, vision and coming together with their experience, and they, right, I'm sure have seen it all.
And done it all based on the references I've looked at. Many levels of services in that community have been right down this road in this time, all of them.
Okay. All right. Do you want to vote individually?
Yeah, I think we should.
And then we'll take a vote?
Okay.
All right.
I'll go for MRI.
I'd go for MRI, too.
How big are you in unanimous?
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we, what's the language that we used last time? Negotiate?
A contract.
The contingent on negotiating a successful contract that will appoint MRI as our fire and EMS consultants?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
We want them to start tomorrow.
Yes. So you want to let them know?
Yeah, I'll send out a message.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your input.
And they've asked, they're going to give me a window of about two weeks to give them the information I need, and by and large, that should be a problem, especially now that I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
So I'll have all that prepared for them.
Okay, excellent.
Great.
Okay, dates to remember, we are meeting next Monday. We've got town council at 6 o'clock, and I think, is that all we've got next week? No, we're going to bring in Frank at 6:30 with the Board of Health. Does a half an hour give us enough time with Greg for legislative update? I would think so.
I don't know.
If we're running a little bit late...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll...
I just mentioned, dates to remember, I sat in on the Bylaws Committee last week because Rich was there, and it was good. He was really helpful, and I really hope they clear my schedule and sit in in a couple of weeks when K and P are there. He did a good job.
Good.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad that we've got them helping.
I think Ellen and him will hit it off, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Terrific. Well, thanks for attending that.
Excuse me, will Maureen Springer be coming back?
No.
From the meeting that she's gone to?
No.
This week, so she's done it over.
She, we're done and over, yeah. She's just letting us know, and it's a Silver Lake decision. They're going to discuss it on Thursday. I'm not sure if they're going to be making a decision on Thursday. Most likely, they will be. It sounds like this is something that they've already supported in the past. Okay, all right. So we've got the two appointments so far on the 18th. We're also meeting on the 25th. We need to get the woman in from, to talk about the...
Aggregation.
Aggregation. So I'll try to get her on 9/25. And then we need to start working with Fire EMS. We've got Bernie on Wednesday.
Yes.
And I think that's all we've got going right now.
Right. So I'll see if I can get a date from Fire EMS for MRI is to get going quickly.
Okay.
Maybe they can do some more independent of the data.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm sure they don't need to meet with us right away. They can just get started.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, oh, that leads to the Collins Group. We got the CIP Plan, the draft of the CIP Plan. We sent it to Nate, the Chair of FinCom. He thought it looked good. And Barbara Gomez saw it as well.
We've got a little, few little tweaks we need to make in some wordsmithing, but except for that, it's a really good document.
Yeah, I thought it was a good document, too. Did you get a chance to read it?
Not having yet, really.
Okay, yeah.
One of the things I think we should do, once it's all settled, is put it on the website.
Oh, definitely. It's a, it really was, I was surprised at how much we had done, you know? We'd really kind of gotten our ducks in a row, and this will be a great tool for us going forward for the financial management of the town. It spells out the five-year plan, and what's being spent each year, and the funding sources. I mean, it is such a thorough plan, and it really is written in a way that is, you know, in layman's terms, so it's easy for people to understand the process and going forward what the plan is. So it was, it's a really good document. So we should be able to get that squared away in a couple of weeks.
Easily, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully in a week.
Easily, okay. Oh, I'll check on the Winnetucksat Swimming Hole. I don't know if...
We need to rename that, since it's no longer swimming.
I wonder if we should call it a fishing hole or...
You know, I think we did, CP, when we did the CPC project, part of that was coming up with a different name. It may even be on the plaque that was put out there. I'll check on that and report back to you.
I Googled it, and it said that it was Winnetucksat Mill Pond.
Right.
So do you think that was what...
Yeah, that might be a good name.
It was named?
I don't know.
I can check the plaque on my way home, or maybe tomorrow when it's light.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it said. We're an old town, though. The old swimming hole, the no-longer...
Formerly known as a swimming hole. Okay. Okay, all right. So I'll check on that tomorrow. We can have her change the language on that. Public safety?
So two of the committees here, so I better be very precise in my reporting, that I get it right. But they met on the 30th, they accepted the placement of the building, they decided on taking the HBAC system, that's the more basic one, a little less efficient, but much less costly. They chose a diesel generator rather than a natural gas. And I mention that because Colleen Thompson mentioned to me that she thought there was grant money available for a generator as a possibility, and wondered if Heidi Minna, the lady you've been conversing with, that might be something to throw out there as a possibility, or whether that's appropriate or not, I don't know.
There was money available, geez, it might have been like a year and a half ago, for generators, but at that time, we weren't far enough along with this process. The Green Communities guy might have information about that as well, so I can definitely look into that with, see if there's a funding source for the generator. Okay.
They meet either next week or the week after, and I'll report.
Perfect.
Did you not meet next week?
Do not?
She, well, she sent me an email. They're not going to meet on the 13th, and she has something... something for the 21st, which is ten days.
Okay.
She's not even sure about that.
Okay.
That was in the email.
All right. Technology?
So, I sent the list of emails that we were going to put up on the server. It turns out Michael just had surgery, Michael Rodriguez. And so, I'm not sure, I didn't go into what kind, but he's laid up for a little bit. So, that's probably going to delay it, but it's in his court now. The other thing was I, you know, we've been talking about this project, I called AUKAS and asked to talk to the fellow who gave us the quotes. I've called him before and left messages, and he's never gotten back to me.
Oh.
So, I'm going to call him and tell him tomorrow that unless somebody gets back to me tomorrow, we're going to go to somebody else.
Yeah, we're moving on. Right.
Yeah. And one of the reasons I want them to come in is to talk about how the layout, we know it's got to go there on that wall, but what that means in terms of a layout of how we would have, say, the podium if we wanted. There's a table that has to be set up for the computer equipment. What makes sense so that people who come in and make presentations, you know, have the easiest access? Because this is a beautiful room. We don't want to muck around with it and have it, you know, have a problem.
Okay. All right, some more to come.
Yeah, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Grants, I reached out to Tom on the Green Communities, and I'll let you know, and I'll check with Heidi on the, anything that we might be eligible for with a generator. And then volunteerism, I don't think there's any thing?
It's just kind of on hold while we get some of these things.
Our ducks in a row. Okay, minutes. We've got general, or the open session meeting minutes from 8:00, 7:00 that Bree provided. Do you have any changes?
I'm okay.
I thought they looked good, too.
I'm okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 8:00, 7:17 as written.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, 8:28. Did you get a chance to read those?
I did.
Okay, anything? I thought they looked great, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well done, Bree.
Nice job. Two for two. There you go.
Come on.
All right, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from 8:28, 17 as written. Do we have a second? All right, all in favor? Aye. All right, 8:28 minutes from executive session submitted by Mark. I thought those looked good, too.
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of 8:28 from executive session as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Rants and raves. All right, I'll go first.
Okay.
I, is, it kind of going back to volunteerism, and with all of the terrible weather, the hurricanes that have hit Texas and now Florida, how great it is to see so many people come out and help their neighbors, their friends, people you don't even know, and it's just, it's a great thing, and I just think it's important for all of us to serve others in some capacity, and it may not necessarily be public office, but just, you know, helping other people, and I think it makes the world a better place when you can do something nice for someone, and on any level, just, you know, being a good neighbor and looking out for each other.
It was the first time to see social media used in a nice way.
Yeah, and isn't that nice? How refreshing.
It really was. There wasn't, there weren't negative things like that. It was everybody having everybody's back.
Right, focusing on just.
How are you, and how are your friends?
Getting the job done. Yeah, it is. It's very nice. Do you want to go next, or?
Sure. I have the same rave, I guess. This was on Plimpton helping Plimpton. Apparently Christopher Bado and a group of people put together a truckload of shipment of feed for animals, and sent it down to Houston. And they posted, he posted the letter on Plimpton helping Plimpton that a lady wrote that was living in Houston flooded, didn't have enough money for feed for the animals, and what a difference it made. And if you get the chance to read that, it's September 6th on Plimpton helping Plimpton under Christopher Bado. I'm not sure of the people other than him who were on it, but fantastic. Really nice reaching out.
Very nice.
So, mine is today's 9/11, and I think the piece that people forget frequently about 9/11 is what an amazing, beautiful morning that was. A lot like today, like the days are in early September, crystal clear, dry, warm, calm winds, and all that came out of it came out of that, came out of that kind of weather and that kind of atmosphere. And somehow, it's a reminder to me that American democracy comes out of, doesn't come out of, the strength of American democracy doesn't come out of violence and fear and hate, but rather comes out of hope and beauty and opportunity and service. So, the contrast of that day, and actually all those days that feel like this, is how blessed we are to, even with those big hiccups along the way.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Just thinking of my wife's background for that day.
I think everybody's.
Yeah, I think everybody remembers where they were that day.
It was a perfect day yesterday.
It was, not a cloud in the sky, it was a beautiful day. All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.